I'd like to move through the city council minutes from January second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second is very in session. All the papers say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? We will now go to formal proceedings. Is there, are we doing both of these?
Separate one and then.
So, okay, so that was all we were talking about on the notice. So we're gonna do the public hearing, the sale of surplus property, northeast front street lots four and five. Looking for my public hearing script.
Did this appear?
I.
We'll get it for you.
Yeah. Apologize for waiting for the super reps to make sure that I read it correctly.
Let's just.
So ones tax on five hundred and six hundred or they lots store and buy?
Lots of four and five that are also five hundred and six hundred.
Okay.
It's just a different classification. And depending on. So while we're waiting, there's just a big thank you for coming and attending. The workshop earlier that in my estimation, very productive again, trying to get some things. Up to date and appreciate the. The willingness to come and also the willingness to share his input to go through that, so thank you.
I think she's, I think she's coming.
As fast as technology will allow her. No, that's okay. Thank you. All right, public hearing on declaring surplus to property, real property, property located on. Marhanning tax map four and twenty five zero nine D A tax laws five hundred and six hundred. Public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows, we'll have a staff report. Public testimony in the following order, any testimony in support of the application. Any testimony opposing the application, any neutral testimony. And the applicants rebuttal if any, any. Then we will close the public testimony. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the city council. Has a specific question. The city council may ask questions of staff, after which the city council will discuss the matter and make a decision. The city council may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of that time and date you will receive. Testimony, if you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. I will recognize those people wishing to speak, any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium as the hearing is being recorded. Please keep testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantive criteria, criteria, excuse me. Disclosure, now I ask the members of the city council to disclose any expartee. Contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest. And indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anybody have any conflict of interest that they need to declare at this time? Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the city council's impartiality? Staff report, city manager Brandon Hammond will be presenting the staff report.
It's a little comical because of the length that you just went through and the report that I'm gonna be sharing is quite possible. Again, when we learn to sell surplus, we failed to mention. The appraisal value, I saw after two, valued to. Real estate agents who gave an estimate of ninety thousand dollars in acreage for this area, roughly about two dollars a square. That's the best we were.
That's the report?
Yep.
How much was that?
Two dollars.
Is there any additional correspondence beyond those items included in the staff report? Public testimony, does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak against the application? Does anyone have any neutral testimony? The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Does staff need to respond to a question or issue raised by the testimony, that would be known. Now is the time for the city council, have any questions of staff? Where specifically are these lots that we've talked, is this where we're thinking about getting incubator building, is that what?
No, towards the opposite end, over by the dog park, that end.
It's the dog park? So it's the sale of the dog park?
Yes, and lot adjacent to it.
Which is currently live parking, I correct. Adjacent east or adjacent west?
West. Never. Dog park west. The one on the corner is.
So where are we moving the dog park?
Over by the splash pad. And then.
Really?
And then we'll have another one south.
Is it gonna be a.
In between splash pad and. Skate park.
On the hill, on the.
That's correct.
That's correct, same.
Same area, just a different location.
Different.
Basically.
Yeah.
I don't think can.
It'll be a little bit smaller.
Do we have any concerns about dog park or the instant slash pad and skate park? Yeah. For kids, little kids, dogs. I see people in their park all the time with their dogs. Now, and some of us.
Yeah.
So you're, we're thinking about selling the lots at the dog park and the parking lot are on.
Correct.
And so we're declaring them surplus.
We, we already have, everything's already been approved, the only thing we left out was the appraisal. Is there an action, there's not even an action, this is information we left out the appraisal. So the next time we come with surplus will, will be present.
Will there any other questions?
Free Brandon Hammond.
Yeah, yeah, we did that whole script there all at one time.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I don't think we need the dog park to move to north fence.
We talked, the only part that we talked about is that we'd move somewhere.
Right, we move somewhere.
So not all of them, things up for sale or surplus. Why would we move the dog park from the sale of surplus?
We want. Not to listen.
No, the whole script there is up for surplus.
No, we only have this over there. Like right next to the dog park.
Does it just go right up to the soccer field?
So you have, you have all the, then you have a big deal, then they. A lot, then you have dog park, that's all. And then on, if you keep going past the.
Soccer field?
The soccer field and the splash pad, we have one square there, that's it. The other one is P C D A's, that's that end.
So the soccer field in this lot, right, are not up for surplus?
No, I mean, I.
I thought there's not other surplus back in the world.
No.
I don't recall, but I know we did.
We, I mean, the land with the C A that was up for surplus, the land next to it and all that.
Any other questions?
Well, it would have been helpful to have had a map. With this package. It seems to me like, is there a reason not, I mean.
I, I did have a note to do it.
Oh, okay.
But.
You should be able.
No, no, it's right there, so.
No, I just, I just, because like you say, if we don't work with these lots every day.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I do have a concern on the dog park. Right by where little kids are playing.
And again, that.
And I think that the dog park currently. Is just Nancy.
Oh.
And. And then I have a problem with it around where little kids are gonna be playing. So.
I think the issue is, is that the people that do use it, and I'll use the, the, the front of the. School as an example, is that people just go there and, I mean, they even have the little doggy bags in, they only use them.
Yeah.
Like I see it all day long, like in, in front of the property where we have our business. Nobody uses it, like they just, whatever, they don't care. And I don't know, and I don't know if there's any way that you can force people to use that stuff, but I, I do agree, like even before the dog park, it was. Like no, nobody cared, nobody used the things, and if they did, everywhere, you know, so I don't know. I was glad when the high school put their fence up. Because for the longest time it wasn't up and people just went out onto the soccer field. And used it and I, I would complain to people, you'd see them, I was like, what are you doing, like this is a school property, like you're just randomly, but. In the end, people don't care, so I don't know.
I like the, I don't, I like the, the dog park by the, I don't have a problem, let's put it that way. To be between, to be center located, as far as being able to have people stop there and. If they have an animal that's good in the park, they can go to the splash pad. The splash pad is kind of a summer thing.
But then again, that doesn't sound nice.
And don't, don't think I'm saying that I'm against the dog, I just, I think I, I kind of agree with Brendan, it's like if we're gonna offer that. If there's any way that we can make it so people will take better care of it because it is something that we offer, we don't have to operate it.
Correct.
So that would be nice, that's all.
I, I think like you're saying, the only reason we offered it is trying to keep them off the soccer field, which.
Which did help, it did help, yes.
Only kept the little dogs in the dog park and keeps the big dogs on the soccer field. Wasn't quite, it wouldn't work out quite as happily as we'd hoped.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Do we need to do a vote?
No.
Nothing.
I think that's just what we're asked. Okay, so that takes care of. The first public review. So we're gonna have a public hearing for the sale, sale of surplus property on Tower Road. Public hearing on declaring surplus real property, property located on. Parcel one of partition plat twenty fourteen dash five. In the city of Marham, state of Oregon, this property is approximately three hundred and seventy, three hundred and seven acres. Located on Tower Road, this now. Public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows, the staff report. Public testimony in the following order, any testimony in support of the application. Any testimony opposing the application, any neutral testimony, the applicant's rebuttal if any. Then we will close the public testimony, after the record is closed for testimony. No other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the city council has a specific question. The city council may ask questions of staff, after which city council will discuss the matter and make a decision. The city council may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of that time and date you will receive. Testimony, if you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. I will recognize those people wishing to speak, any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium as the hearing is being recorded. Please keep testimony concise and to the point, testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantive criteria. Disclosure, now I ask the members of this, of the city council to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest. And indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anyone have any conflict with this? Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a city council's impartiality? Staff report, city manager Brandon Hammond will be presenting the staff report.
That's mine.
Thank you.
Jackie will pull up the Tower Road and as she's doing that. When do we present on Tower Road, it hasn't been that long.
It's not ever presented.
Wasn't that long ago? So again, um, again, it was. My oversight, we failed to do the Tower Road appraisal, we had an appraisal, appraiser come in. And give an appraisal value of two point two million dollars, and it's a little over three hundred acres. Off of Tower Road.
Did you say two point two million?
Two point two, correct, now it is. Um, again, it's right, the property, right by loves, all the way down. Over past Coonsy, that's the whole length of the section. And is that it?
Yeah.
So it's Tower Road, Coonsy, that, that corner?
It's all the way down.
Yep.
You guys already sold that, it comes all the way down here, goes all the way up, I'm too short to reach. And thank you, there's Coonsy, goes up there. So all that.
Shore loves that.
So that's good. Okay, um, the one thing that is, is. It's not as gotten dry because there, depending on the ground, there are some areas where the E P A is so that. You know, square footage or what you give per acre is gonna be a little different, so it's. So the general appraisal was brought in at two point two million dollars.
So is that all of the property we own out there that goes all the way down to? Okay.
Correct, yep, all we know.
That red line, that red hash mark line stuff there.
Yep.
All the, that funky little thing around loves.
So where does our. City of Wardman property, or city of Wardman, city limits in.
Coonsy and Paulson.
Yeah.
On the inside of Coonsy.
So that, that's all out of the city limits?
Yeah.
This is all in the economy.
And the city owns up to Paulson, all the way down to.
Correct.
Baylor, right, not Baylor, but.
Right about, behind the.
Whereas Lewis Clark would connect at the moment. Which is behind that.
And the purpose, do we have a purpose for ever selling it?
Yeah, um, there are some interested buyers.
That's a big chance.
It is.
It wasn't originally produced, it really been out there and the engineers determined that it was not a power explanation.
Yep.
So effectively land that we're just sitting on.
Correct.
With no use.
And how close is it to say three Monmouth End Farms?
Probably, probably close. Probably the obvious one is the aisle, south, this is one of the farms. So if we sell the land, where's the money go to the general fund?
No, it's gonna go to the sewer fund, it was purchased with sewer funds for a sewer.
So it has to go back into the sewer.
Okay.
It's a good thing.
Any other questions?
I guess it's kind of still the.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak against this application? And does anyone have any neutral testimony? So we'll close the hearing, this public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. We had to give a, with, we'll scale, the city council will have any questions, is that, are there any other questions that anybody might have for the staff?
Again, the simplicity will be next time we have the appraisal, so. Save your.
Financial report, month end, month ending December twenty twenty three.
Uh, and you should add that, uh, I went down to the market with this woman, she wrote some. Some of the others, um, if you also, just at the very bottom. Um, there are instances whenever. Our, how our council falls, if, there are times that it, it will be a little more difficult to get it out. Um, to you, but the majority of it, it will be on. Please be aware and hopefully. Gracious, as we are hired, we just hired a new H R payroll. Learning and doing a lot of training, um, and it's also with. Martin's time and helping with the prez, I, those of you who attend, it was, it was fun to hear. The input when someone was asking a question, they're like, oh, Martin, I already guessed it up. Um, so she really puts a lot of time, effort, and is doing quite a bit. Um, and as soon as, um, way gets her feet under her, there, again, it will be more time, but there are gonna be some instances when. Council's on the second, and I think that's in April and. June, July, couple of those, that, that would be a little bit, other than that would be.
Anyone have any special questions or comments to have regarding the financial report?
Appreciate having those notes. We got a for a second, is, is the money going to the sewer fund or the sewer reserve fund?
I can't answer that.
Which one is the one that we're paying the Geo bond back at?
I didn't answer that either, it's a separate account. The Geo bond should be under.
It has the Geo on account label, yeah. I just thought that it was coming out of some water reserve or some sewer reserves, like a.
We should be paying the Geo bond out of four ten. And. You know, that's a deal, we can't pay it early until there's a certain months, amount of years going, went by. And I don't remember how many years have to go by, we'd have to call the bond council. But, uh.
That will be a clarification when, um, on this report.
Yeah.
We should clear.
Anytime.
Sure. Just a spinoff from the first question.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? You ready to go for? All right, so we'll go on to the public comment, create range presentation, Marhanning schools. Bella. Oh, we got two. Do you each have something to read?
No.
So, okay, so now you get.
Oh, I'm Bella, I have, and then, uh, Windy River. I'm, you know, the best president of Windy River Elementary. Um, good evening, Windy River Elementary has had a fun field winter. In January, we successfully held a candy drive in which we gave all our donations to the Mormon Food Day. Recently, all students completed their I R E test. They're celebrating our growth with a raffle to win sports balls, backpacks, bicycles, and morgue. Currently, A S B is planning assembly with guest speakers and exciting mini games. We are also planning a student-led Valentine's Day themed door-to-door contest. We are excited to help make Windy River a fun and joyful place to come to, thank you for your help.
Thank you. Judith, you didn't read anything. Morals for great, anyone have any questions for these two dead ladies, comments?
Takes a lot to get up there and speak in public, okay, you're doing a good job.
Thank you, you're representing Windy River very well.
What's the prize for the winner of the door competition?
Um, I think. That the class gives donors.
I thought that's what it was.
Yeah. Ask what most of those did still.
Remember reading the email. Good job, ladies. Is there any other individuals that would like to have a public comment? All right, Mr. Bass, before. Uh. I have a public comment. Okay, now we're at the time for the invitation of public comment. Interested audience members are invited to provide comments. Anyone may speak on any topic other than. A matter of litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. The mayor may limit comments to three minutes per person for a total of thirty minutes. Please complete a request to speak card, or request to speak card prior to the meeting. Speakers may not yield their time to others. And we have one public comment in the audience, and obviously, Mr. Bus is notified that he would like to speak. So we'll go online first, Mr. Bus.
Hi, um, so. I was wondering, when I'm online, like I am now, what would be the best way for me to communicate that I want a public comment? Cause I've tried a couple of different ways, um, and this, just like speaking up. When you read that, has worked the best. Though I also put it in the chat, so. What works best for y'all?
Say that since if you're online, probably the easiest way to do that is to notify through chat. That you would like to have be part of a public comment, uh, just kind of like what you did. And then that will notify the person running the computer that you are wishing to have a public comment.
Okay, and, uh, when, should I do that right as I come into the meeting, or wait till the public comment section part?
If you know that you're gonna have a public comment, sooner the better.
Okay.
And then that just gets everything to go, I would imagine that would make sense, especially if you knew that you were gonna do it.
Cool. Cool. Awesome. I also want to say that the website, the updated website looks really nice. Both for the City of Boardman and Moro County.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bus.
You're welcome. Cool, I hope y'all have a good night.
Alright, thank you. Alright, George Schimer.
I just have, uh, two, two things I want to share with you, uh. The partner did, we did a grant for, um. But I think about five thousand dollars, and what we're using to pay for memberships for our seniors in the community. Uh, so they can come down to the rec centers and use our facilities to. Participate in classes, get in the pool, whatever they need, and it doesn't matter if they. One season year, full time to year. Three hundred six, five, eight, zero, whatever it is, uh, but just want to let you know that, so you pass that on to your constituents. Uh, the other item has to do with the, your, your charter, uh, I can hold off on this for, uh, a few months. Once I found this out, uh, and you really didn't get into it yet, uh, but I want you to know that, um. This is my opinion, uh, when you go to, when you're elected to your position, you're elected for the year of four years. Okay, um, we, we choose you. Okay, when you appoint someone. It is my belief that that should be till the next election. Not to finish out that term. Because if you're selecting it, that's not coming from us as the people. I know it throws out the count, it can, from out of the three, three, every other years, um, and. But. In my opinion, it, that should not be in your power. That's really up to us as the people to make that choice of who we want for a state council. And just because it throws out the numbers, yeah, I mean, I understand that working with boards, that it is much easier, that there's. Fluency, uh, transitioning, but to me, the election process was there to be elected by the people. So that's just one person's opinion, I can't say I've gone out and talked to a lot of people, I have talked to a few people, but. Just wanted to hear that from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schimer. And I am leaving to go watch the games. Alright, so we're at our action items ordinances, a one dash twenty twenty four ordinance development code. Amendment to section three point four point zero 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 point B.
Do you have any information? Does anybody else share now?
Yeah, I'm online. Glad to answer any questions. Glad to answer any questions that the council may have, um, what's available in front of you in the packet is the adopting ordinance. Um, uh, our attorney provided a response to the Tallman, uh, attorney letters. Goes through the points, and then there is the, I think that's attachment A, and attachment B. Is the actual language that's being proposed to be amended in its final form. So once this is accomplished, um, and the, the council approved this at the conclusion of the public hearing last month. So this is simply just the adopting ordinance that is in front of you tonight. Um, it's been posted, it meets the requirements for you to read it, uh, by title once. Um, and it's concluded, and I, we also included an emergency clause. Um, because of the Luba appeal, and again, we're not doing this specifically to address the Luba appeal. But it is one of the things we're doing to accomplish the, the remand requirements. Um, once this is in place, then we will reissue the permit for the, for the Loop Road. Um, that is also subject to that remand, but again, this is not only applicable to the Loop Road as we've. Been calling it down there, um, at Devon and Yates. This new language would be applicable to any city project that was accomplished. Um, our city attorney is also on the line, if you have any questions for him about either what's in the letter. Um, that he drafted, or what, um, if you have any questions about anything else. But again, this is simply the next step in the adoption of the public hearing that was held last month.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, we're done, I'll entertain anybody that wishes to read it, we'll do the record.
I move to approve the reading by title only, the ordinance number one dash two thousand twenty four. An ordinance amending the Boardman Development Code, chapter three point four, Public Facility Standards, section three point four point zero zero zero. Purpose and applicability, item B, applicability to allow the city to diverse certain public improvements.
Okay, Kevin, uh, a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you, the staff member.
And ordinance number one dash two zero two four. And ordinance amending the Boardman Development Code, chapter three point four, Public Facility Standards, section three point. Four point zero zero zero. Purpose and applicability, item B, applicability to allow the city to diverse certain public improvements.
I move to adopt ordinance number one dash two thousand twenty four. And ordinance amending the Boardman Development Code, chapter three point four, Public Facility Standards, sections three point four point zero zero zero. Purpose and applicability, item B, applicability to allow the city to diverse certain public improvements.
I second. Alright, so I have a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? So we'll go to our next action item, two dash two zero two four, and control review changes to chapter six. Of the municipal code.
Uh, the Jose's that I tell him, uh, shares a brief of information about the, the, what he does, um. Just to give him this, I mean, Jose has done a tremendous job, um, I hear nothing but good things about him. The report that he has, his ability to connect in extremely difficult situations. And then to come to resolutions throughout that, um, is huge, um, and this. This process has really been spurred by him, trying to respect the work that he's doing, trying to give him all the tools. That he needs to do their job, so.
I'm firm. Uh, you mean mayor and council, so I'm David Fernandez, I'm the holding files and outreach officer for the city of Portland. So including your tactics are, uh, the documents which outline the proposed changes to the Boardman Municipal Code, chapter six, sound good, so. So the first one is our print code, how we currently have it, uh, the second one shows all proposed changes, red line. And the third one is a new copy of the proposed changes, so. We assess the need to, uh, we have that by period, and we had further clarification. Uh, he knows some of the layout and we do some reliability. Um, we have that a globe that go now on outline the process. So I feel that these changes will make the code easier to understand, uh, by the citizens, and allows the. Analyst officer to effectively implement and enforce the codes. So I, uh, thank you for your time reviewing this proposal, uh, change to the Boardman Municipal Code, and. Here to answer any questions you guys might have.
So according to our little, uh. You can just go on the website, any citizen who wanted to see this. You can go right on the website, we click on that little icon, and it'll take you to all the same thing we're looking right here, right? That's pretty cool, yeah, so they can see exactly. What the changes are, okay.
Uh, we've had a couple of people come to do pre-arranged presentations in regard to, um, having chickens. Inside city limits, and I know that other, other cities have a lot of chickens inside city limits, such as sporkings. And I'm just wondering, um, why we haven't taken into consideration possibly changing that.
So we will probably work on that later on, uh. I know a lot of people have been wanting to have chickens inside of city limits, so that's gonna be a whole other process. Where we get a set of rules for chicken that large to do, so it's gonna be another process, but it'll probably be in the works.
That's a great idea, great suggestion.
I, I just bring it up because I know that it's been brought before housework a couple of times, and, and we are electric powered people, so it is our responsibility to take care.
Does this give you the, do you feel that this is gonna give you all the authority you need to take care of dangerous dogs?
Yes. Um, so we clarified. Medicine dogs and public nuisance, they're generally distinguish the difference. So in our new code, we will distinguish the difference between dangerous dogs and aggressive dogs, so it will help out.
Anyone else have some questions? You want to online? Alright, thanks Jose.
I move to approve the reading by title only, the ordinance number two dash two thousand twenty four. And ordinance amending the Boardman Municipal Code Title Six Animal Control.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, any opposed?
Uh, ordinance number two dash two zero two four. And ordinance amending the Boardman Municipal Code Title Six Animal Control.
I move to adopt ordinance number two dash two thousand twenty four. And ordinance amending the Boardman Municipal Code Title Six Animal Control.
Sir. Alright, I have a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? We have some resolutions here, a resolution three dash twenty twenty three, declaring a surplus vehicle, two thousand fifteen Ford F two fifty.
You know, we can have a public workshop, we're a lot of time in the shop, except it's out of meters right now. And we have that two thousand sixteen pickup, that has a broken can in it. Has eighty thousand miles on it, and we get it, a new motor is ten thousand dollars, that's. Versus the motor on solid. So I'd like to take it to auction, because it does still run, sort of, but at least enough to get it through the auction. And, and again, we thought, look, used motors, they're really hard to come by, and I was told, probably will have the same problem. If you did, if you have. The problem I've been having with that one, it's a six point two liter Ford, and apparently they. Don't hold up real well, so I think you have a good pickup, that utility box on it. And you take it to, uh, auction over in Washington, uh, Booker Auctions. You will get rid of it anyway, surplus it. If you have any questions.
I have a question, does the utility box worth keeping? And is someone prepared or something?
If we had another pickup that had been possibly the.
Is that a future purchase or another period?
Probably not, it's two thousand fifteen. Well, no, there's a range of papers, but you know, I might be paid for that bit, so.
Um, just a question, but I think it would go more for the city manager, um, do we have to dispose an appraisal for anything else other than land? If we're gonna declare a surplus?
We are in shape, seeing shape, sorry.
Any other questions? Thank you all.
I move through resolution three dash two thousand twenty four, a resolution declaring city ordinance property as excess.
I have a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, action items, other business, Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee. Twenty twenty four to twenty five, uh, you are a budget calendar. I think we got it Tuesday, or that all one. Read a point of you are a budget committee members, Dory Drago, term ending twelve thirty one twenty three. Steven Pass, term ending twelve thirty one twenty three, and Lisa Middlestar, term ending twelve thirty one twenty three.
Sorry, two, two motions coming up. Approving the calendar and then doing the approval.
Okay, so we're gonna approve the calendar.
Yeah.
So. Right after the resolution.
Maybe, maybe. Alright, so we need an approval of the budget calendar.
I make a motion that we approve the twenty four twenty five urban renewal agency budget calendar.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Alright, so I need a motion to reappoint the urban renewal agency budget committee members.
We'll contact them to make sure they all want to do that, I mean. And then she did.
Did we talk, did, did we talk about this earlier?
Yeah, it was in the, she forgot to.
Yeah, it was in the, she forgot to include the budget piece in the January or the you are a.
Oh.
Budget committee in the January meeting, but they are two separate entities, but it's all. Okay.
And I see Steven Fuss there, he didn't say he didn't want to do it, but. Uh, we're gonna.
I still wanna do it.
Like to do it?
Yes, please.
There's a thumbs up there.
I make a motion to appoint Dory Drago, Steven Fuss and Lisa Middlesore to the urban renewal agency budget committee, term ending twelve thirty one twenty twenty six.
And I'll second that.
Can I get a motion in a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? All right, so we're gonna go to the blitz report.
So we have uh. In January, yeah. One. You know, here. Uh. Starting out about, uh, I look from last year to this year for January, you're up like. Ten calls, which are just over the last January. Um. So now. Busy, just like you have been. Um, I did get some on the phone there, I was just gonna give you, um, my demo that you. These two out over here, the uh, the uh. Brochure, gonna get that done this year. So last year for total incident, we were at four thousand one hundred twenty eight. Uh, this year for twenty twenty three is uh twenty twenty, for twenty twenty three, we were at uh four thousand six hundred forty two incidents. So five hundred incidents more. Um, from twenty two to twenty three, so. Growing city, more population, more businesses. Call service go up. I don't know if they have any questions for me. Hope, one of the things that they want to uh. So I went back and looked at a little time period, what was it, about a week of our, our, our bad weather. However, I wanted to shout out to the public works. Uh, we responded to the shooter and NBA when they were all outside of jurisdiction. We didn't have any side offs or anything like that. And I think a lot of that has to do with the, the roads, which you think are around the intersection, so. Shout out to the public works, like a lot of hard work and a lot of hours, I know it's been. That's all I have. Thank you for that.
And with, and the other thing is even though they did all of that work, there were still people who were really upset.
Yes.
They were really upset. There's still people out there and uh.
If you have to say we worked really hard, we had a lot of snow this year compared to. Last and please grant all your comments to me.
I guess I. Like. I'd like to mention that uh. Officer Navarro has uh finished his training and, or was that gonna be under yours eventually?
You're good.
Well, I was waiting for the police guy. He, he, he can patrol. He's finished his training and is on his own patrolling and so. I think that we should give him a real shout out that, you know, that's a year's commitment of. A lot of time being home, away from home to uh the. Training program and stuff, so we're excited to have him out and about on the road.
He's on his own and.
Thing I like about it too is that he's, I don't, he wasn't born here, but raised here, went to high school here. You know, chose to come back, raising his family here, like, I don't know, that's important to me.
Yeah.
So.
Great. So.
All right, building department report. I think both everybody was able to walk through the new section as being well earlier today.
When?
Teaching during COVID years.
He's taking a nap now.
Looking for me? Hello? What was the question? I stepped away.
All right, John, we're at the building uh department report. Did you have anything?
So I looked at the agenda and there wasn't one on there.
You got it added. Cause we had that little police report.
So the only thing I have a report is that. You can look at that and as we have slowed down a bit. Um, we've had one builder kind of pull out. Our numbers are down compared to last summer. But uh, I think it's looking bright. I think this summer we're gonna do the same thing and just knock it out of the park.
I got a question. Are we gonna have an open house for the new section?
Yes, we're gonna do a five o'clock. So people can just stop by on the way home when we're all done and moved in. Yep.
Any other questions for the building department? Thanks, Glenn.
Yep, good night.
Public Works Department.
I did want to point out one thing on there, you mentioned about the roads. Yeah, if you look down to one in the line of left to the bottom, two hundred thirteen point five hours of overtime. From the thirteenth to the twenty second. So it comes as a lot of overtime.
I will say that there was a day where. It was the last, well, the day that the school closed in Portland.
Anticipated roads.
Uh, yeah, it was the day of the anticipated uh ice storms coming in us. And so the city, I think, worked really well with the schools in Portland, with the roads and. Yeah, it was a day off, but at the same time, I was like, we could probably have gone to school that day. But I don't see the outside of the city limits. So, you know, but that was a shout out to our public works department on the roads, on the sanding. On helping with the parking lots of the schools and various things that they do. And I think the toughest part people were struggling with is. Roads that the city doesn't take care of, not getting plowed. That was the hardest part. I was like. Do you, the city doesn't own that road, I'm sorry. I said the best thing you could do is call the city and see if there's something they can do. I mean, the worst thing they can do is say no, but if you don't ask.
You got, what, no, you think?
No, it's just they didn't, they didn't have any road, so, you know, you got the trailer parks. We had a whole lot of snow get dumped in a couple days. And if you were an individual who was in a trailer park that wasn't plowed or a. Subdivision that wasn't plowed or in a apartment complex that wasn't. Owned by the city and the owner of it doesn't do it, you're kinda at the will of the snow. Especially when the snow gets piled up as you go and plow the roads. Especially when you blow, shovel your sidewalk and then the city shovels it back on. That was, yeah, and and that's just, goes with the territory, I guess, but. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
I, I would like to say, I'm very grateful. There aren't many hills in Portland, so.
Yeah.
But when there's slight slope. And there's a lot of traffic going real slow, they make a thicker layer of ice is what they do.
Yes.
And when you're coming down those tiny hills. Um, it's nice to have something to grip it. Slice of gravel. So I appreciate that a lot.
We try to do it long.
Coming down all of them, that's a little. It's a little tricky right there.
Yeah, it was a big shout out, but that's, I mean, we had a lot of snow and I think our crews worked really hard to try to keep up with it.
That was pretty cool. I don't think someone had equipment that's really warm.
Well, there's nothing without that. This is an impressive market site, so. Otherwise it's sand in the back, it's really soft. And then they walk them out, so.
All right, city manager report.
Yes, uh, just as was mentioned earlier, uh, well, the website is live. Um, there are some things that we'll just keep correcting along the way and then it has this. Uh, in contact with company, but again, that like just. That solid one image, go there, everything should be very easily accessible. Um, one thing that I personally like, and it's always been there. But when you click on the agendas, when you click, click on the history, it's everything. Like any video, any agenda documents, it's all in there, so it's just pretty cool. And then it's just gonna get better. Um. That's where we're gonna have all the projects listed, the images, the prices, everything's gonna be on that. Um, what's the tab called, Amanda?
I think it's projects.
Is it projects? And yeah, so on there again, that, that's. Not quite there, it will start as soon as um Anderson Perry does their final presentation, put it up there. Um, so as you can see, we got the two point six million from the CRES. Uh, the CRES three approved the city's request to expand the um. Area, zone, the.
So we put it.
Thank you.
The what?
And. Um, which, which shows along the boat we were talking about on the front street, that's the direct connection with that. Um, so very, very cool for that. Um, just as we, I know how much you guys love the, you know, meetings. So the next one is on the fifth. Um, same thing with six. Um, and then we need to schedule a. Uh. Community. And, and the way that I'm receiving the community is whoever wants to come can come in. Like we will literally have a charter, we'll have the old one out, we'll have the adjustments made. Community members can come in, they can ask some questions, but this would not necessarily be, you have to attend, but we're just trying to give. Uh, the community an opportunity, so um. If you're okay with selecting it or do you wanna have input on selecting the date? I just wanna make sure we have plenty of advertisement. Plenty of dollars.
I want you to do it on Tuesday, Tuesday night, City Council.
Okay.
I don't know when we're doing.
That is.
The next. Uh, workshop that we did tonight. So he's asking for another day.
He wants another day.
To do the.
Again, you don't have to attend this shift for the community and then just look at the charter and see.
Then we wanna do it after? The charter is done, after we present, is what you're asking?
The thought is the chips have impressions, have opportunities for them, people come in, so it's not just about the one, the. So again, it, it, we just said.
It's not a formal meeting, it's just.
It's not. It's, it's a, what do we call it? It's a.
Open house?
Open house.
So are you going to try to have it online before that time? Because nobody will come in person.
Hmm, yeah.
I, I don't care, whatever you wanna do.
That will be.
Okay, we can split it. We can, we can, no, that's good. We can just play it online. I mean, again, we can do a Zoom. And we can then display, hey, this is the, and we can scroll through it. It'll be a little more difficult to say.
You can, you can figure it out.
Johnny and Sally. Look at page two, well, but, well, yeah, but is there, so a timeframe, middle of the month, end of month, I mean, again. It's on March, we launch.
So if you go out two weeks, that could give you time to get it all, either.
When spring break?
Spring break, yeah.
Thank you.
Do it the following week.
Spring break is the twenty fifth and twenty ninth.
Right, so I'm talking about the nineteen, two, two weeks after council. Right?
I think so.
And.
Yeah, Adam, I have to say. Well, we don't even have to be present.
You do not. Yes, it's just an opportunity for the team to see the work we do.
Are you looking to do it in the evening?
Thousand o'clock.
So our condition would be more or less, it's gonna be a random joke.
Yeah.
But I think it's in. And anybody that's available can.
Exactly, and then again, not do it towards the end because that's spring break and maybe do it towards that.
And then.
So maybe the third week.
Um, so I have a question about who you were saying possibly putting it online, right?
Hmm.
Okay, my suggestion would be put it in person before you put it online. So you can encourage people to be here in person versus just online, pick it apart and come and complain.
Oh, yeah, I don't.
I, 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 I'm just saying, I would rather have people come in person, check it out. Versus just putting it online because then typically you put something online first, they're not gonna come in. And then you're gonna deal with more complaints than input.
Correct. How many, how many, can you, we are doing a community in March and then we're doing another one.
We were gonna do it in two total. Twenty seven, April, second or something over. So we have a community event in March and then another one in April. After the final review in April, after we do the final review with the council.
Okay. I, I just think.
No, I think.
A lot of, a lot of new faces. In town now, I mean, there's a lot of new people moving here, it'd be a good opportunity to.
Just.
Just, yeah, just meet, you know, meet them or whatever, you know.
Okay.
It's, it's not a formal meeting. I don't know that it needs to be online. Um, and I, my only question would be if you would move it. Somewhere else in the community, so holding it somewhere else.
Correct, and that, that, that was kind of the process as well. All right, consensus? Now online, do the personnel pick it?
Hmm.
Okay. Still in turn, huh?
We should be able to make sure this nail the meeting.
Okay, um, you should have your training videos. It should have been emailed to you.
We have today.
Now it's sent, you think, I never.
Oh, it came out November.
Training videos?
The end guidance.
You should have seven.
So safe schools, is what you're telling me.
Yes.
No, it's, it's.
I don't think I got them.
It's on.
No, it's, it's elected.
In your national thing.
So it's canceled.
I don't think I got us. Unless I deleted it by accident, I've been going through my emails and I don't recall CNN.
Your city email?
My city email.
Okay, so we're right, so Paul.
I, I, I may, I may have missed listening to you, but.
Take it or what you want, we'll take.
Oh, they're, they got.
I mean, well, I don't know if I got elected essential or not, but I did give it some other classes, I did give some other classes.
No, I, I don't mind watching more videos.
They, did you get them?
I doubt, I don't know, I just went through my emails the other day and it may be in there.
In, near the marketing.
Okay.
And I believe the, yeah.
I.
Oh, you need a little bit more than the nineteenth of January. The CIS, is that what it's called?
Yeah, I know, they do.
It went out like in November.
It would have come from CIS, he sent an informational, you know, be watching for these, but the actual videos came out in January.
You say CIS, you're referring to.
Yeah, it says CIS Learning Center.
Yes.
Learning plan.
Thank you.
That's the app or something.
So.
And it, it doesn't say anything in mine.
Peter and Rob.
I've been taking classes since.
Oh, and there was a lead, and there's a lead.
It's all in blue with a white letters.
Yeah, I'm all the way to cancel and say.
We'll work on that, we have a. For.
Yeah, I have a.
Okay, um, well, just, really the two last things, we did a small cities meeting in Oregon, we're all managers came together. Um, now. We did that, but that's not what we're talking. We did the rural county city swing. Very beneficial, um, Lexington, Kefner, uh, the county was there and. Here it is, so we will, we will.
So no, so no I own again?
They did not, they, there was a conflict at that time that again, we're gonna, I've, I've been in contact with uh, Mayor. Liz. But we'll keep doing that. I, I mean, it really is very beneficial and it was a bit, was it? Um, and the last thing is. Uh, the southeast front is gonna be, we're putting it active a little bit at the start issue. But that's gonna change. Um, the northwest plania is out a bit advertisement and it will. I, I think we do the thing in March, really come in and hand in a bit and. It is a very cool process where they literally. Hand it to you, wait. You read it and then you award it. That was, that was pretty fun and a bit of part of that, so.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about?
Yeah.
Um, some of them, so. Uh, the building is a sidewalk.
Yes.
So. I know that phase two or phase four, phase six, it's a river ridge. Um, did you have a conversation about where that sidewalk is going to connect down?
Yeah, we're talking about.
Because of the, we're all in, right?
Yeah, we're in right now and to river ridge. So it's gonna be four, it's six, we're gonna move it sooner.
I was a little worried about that.
Okay.
And then, um, the stoplight under design and public engagement, what is that roll out for public engagement?
Soon, um.
That was on the what I had to tell, but yeah.
Yeah.
We can answer that right now. Well, I don't know if it's an answer, which is directive to say that you're gonna start planning that.
Yeah, um, it it's gonna go to the planning commission. Prior to the planning commission, there will be conversations that that I'll have with the owners and the affected entities. Um, after the planning commission, then you will have a public input session, so that that's gonna be the process. And it's coming soon, just takes a little bit of time to get all the ducks and whatever. There.
Will that also include Front Street is announced?
Yes, yes, all right, correct.
Any other questions? Counselors.
I went to the February winner of the January, I don't remember the date. Um, housing summit. And after a couple of hours of introduction, discussion, housing concerns, um, the building agreement that we made again on February eighth. Um, for several hours, we're gonna try to bring in more CEOs and production managers and um, uh, community leaders to the conversation to build more consensus. Um, the person who came to do the summit talked about an area around Claphamness that's using a similar approach to find housing solutions for the people that live around that area and networking with Lewis Clark State College. Um, and Decca, no. George Fox, George Fox, excuse me, and Decca and that they have a list of different people and he showed some very unique ways to develop housing for affordable, um, quick and not, um. So one of our concerns has been, you know, homeless housing and we're, we, when we went to the LSC conference, we ended up in a big tour for homeless housing and we were really looking for middle income housing. So one of the things that was addressed at the housing summit was middle income housing. And then it's of being able to do something quickly so that you lower your costs overall for your, your construction. Because you can, some of the houses are built in a day or two. The whole thing comes and you just slap it together and voila, like Legos. And voila. Um, and other options were, um, it's all steel buildings, all pre-bad buildings. Um, there's a company over who, do you remember the name? No. And they do some beautiful wood things. They did some of the stuff for the Portland airport recently and it's gorgeous. And, um, so there's a lot for us to learn. But we need some people in the room who can who can do some big commitments.
And.
So we're hopeful. So if you know somebody who's interested in housing, um, who is, you know, with a production manager or, you know, somebody who can put some money behind what they're saying. Um, talk to them, talk to us about them, something.
Well, I think the biggest thing is trying to avoid companies that want to just create rentals. I mean, my concern would be these houses need to be bought. Not just turned into Airbnbs or rentals that just eventually get destroyed or overpriced again, like they need to be homes that people can purchase.
That was part of the discussion there too.
Hmm.
So avoid those kinds of situation.
I didn't attend on Zoom, I did on Zoom, but when, um, was it the small spaces meeting that we you went to, uh, in Oregon? And the city manager from Stanfield said he had somebody that was building houses over there under the two hundred thousand. And did you talk to him at all about that?
No.
Okay. Because that spiked my interest if, you know, and you know, because it's funny how two hundred thousand would maybe seem, you know, but if it was a hundred and eighty-five, you know, that could really help our market. So I don't know who it is. I suppose maybe somebody can call the city manager and Stanfield and ask him, uh, because you know, um, Pop Hen has built here and he's built a lot in Stanfield and he kept his. He always tried to keep his pretty competitive for sure.
And and I was gonna wait till next month. Um, still very early stages, um, but we really have to be willing to look outside the box. And 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 as a city, we have the ability to do that. So there'll, there'll be more information coming, but it really is gonna be collected. I've heard this is not a single entity. I I get a lot of people that come to me and like, well, what's the city gonna do? What, what concessions are you gonna make? Aren't having meetings, we're all coming together, we're doing together. Um, but thinking outside the box and we'll get it moving.
I've been reading a book about middle income housing and so they have, they have what you need to do for your planning code to make it happen. What you need to do for, so what cities can do that don't cost very much money or are negligible in the terms of um, our donation to the project.
And I would say that material costs have dropped considerably too, so we can't have a company come, oh, materials have gone up. No, I I'm I'm like the second owner of Home Depot. I've been there so much and I see the prices when I was doing a remodel when the prices spiked. And I went back several times, you know, obviously since then and and the prices have dropped considerably, almost back to where where they were before. So, yeah, like prices are not out of control. It's just, I think, people are making up for losses. And I think that's where maybe some people are getting kind of oaths in that deal. That is my opinion.
I saw Carla's hand up. Did you have a comment, Carla?
Yeah, I was just, I was gonna try to answer Karen's question about the Stanfield project. Um, having done some work with the community, um, I think one of the biggest inputs that Karen is that there's smaller lots. Um, and so the entire cost of the infrastructure is less because you've got less frontage, you've got less, you've got less pipe, less pavement per, um, per property. So I think that's a big factor um, in that stand, in in the particular Stanfield development where the prices are in that price point.
Thank you.
Thanks Carla. Any other counselor comments? I think the only comment I had was a directive to do manager Hammond was about the stoplight project. Make sure we get a timeline. Um, I'm gonna make sure we have lots of citizens input, the blocks out there that we might be able to have or not have. To, which in regard was about Front Street. I think citizens should have a say on whether or not Front Street is open or closed. State says right in, right out. Maybe the citizens don't want Front Street, just close it all together. I think the citizens should have a say in how they want their street, want Front Street. State says it's gonna be this way, citizens shouldn't have input on how they want to. So that was what we were talking about as far as getting a timeline to let people know and be able to give a map or two, be able to put on a wall. So people have a visual of what's coming. It's really hard to explain it if you can't see it. So, and, um, City Manager Hammond said we would be willing to start looking on that. I don't have any others manager or mayor comments, so this meeting is adjourned.
So we haven't had.
Oh. Sorry, this meeting is not adjourned. We are going to executive session. I didn't even, I was thinking of something else. So, per. I think so. Um, who? Yeah, it's still on your vibrator.
Yeah, he's got it right here on the vibrator.
It's, I'm gonna just want to right here and that. I don't know, I kind of do. Maybe it's right. Yeah. All right, sorry, I adjourned the meeting, but it's not adjourned. We're gonna be open it. Uh, executive session, the Boardman City Council will now meet an executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two, six, six, zero, two, E, which allows the council to meet an executive session to consider real estate. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session in person. The public virtual Zoom meeting link will be closed during the executive session as permissible executive session meetings are not subject to HB two, five, six, zero. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session. Executive session is expected to last less than thirty minutes and no action is planned after we resume the council meeting. Okay, we have just come out of the executive session and will resume our regular city council meeting. Uh, no decisions are going to be made and this meeting is adjourned.